It's clean the fridge, they're gonna figure out something quick to go and get whipped up.
Hey, Carla? Your computer, I joined the computer audio, I mean, I know where.
Trustee Ricabini on?
Stand by.
Thank you.
He was on as an attendee, and I think he's signing on now as a panelist.
Okay. Hi, Maria.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi, Maria.
Good evening, everyone.
Maria.
Hello, trustee Lou, Rael, how are you?
I'm good, thanks, how are you?
Well, thank you.
You look like you've been out in the sun.
I was a little bit today, and I think I'm a little flushed because I'm very excited about the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Tom.
Sorry about that, guys, I had trouble connecting for some reason, I could see you and hear you, but you couldn't see me and hear me, so.
Good evening, I'm going to call the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. This meeting is streamed via Village website, Zoom, and Facebook. The date is October the 14th, 2020, the time is 7:01 PM. To remain in compliance with the state of New Mexico's amended public health order dated September 18, 2020, the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque is live streaming this meeting on its website, Facebook page, through Zoom video teleconferencing, and participants can join telephonically. The instructions on how to participate in this meeting have been posted on the Village website. With that, I will call the role. Mayor Donald T. Lopez is present, trustee Rael.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee Pacheco.
Present.
Trustee Ricabini.
Present.
Thank you. Board of trustees met in a closed executive session at 6:00 PM today to discuss pending litigation. Maria C. Montoya versus the Village of Los Rancho to Albuquerque. The closed meeting was limited to what was specified in the notice. No action was taken, and no other items of business were discussed. At this time, I'm going to move to item three, the approval of the agenda, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
I need a second.
I second.
I'm gonna call for the question, I'm gonna call for the roll call vote, trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four, public comment period. Participants may address the Board of Trustees to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Participants will also be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items for the open session as they come up. Submitted written comments that were sent to the clerk prior to the meeting will now be read. Danielle, are you on?
Mayor, trustees, good evening, I have not received any written comments this evening.
Thank you. Participants wishing to speak that registered with the clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting will be provided an opportunity to speak within the allotted three-minute time limit. Kiko, will you unmute the participant, is Mr. Joe Craig there?
Yes, stand by.
Mayor, trustees, thank you, I don't have any comment as of tonight.
Thank you, Joe, thank you very much. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joe Craig, 505 Caillou del Pajito Northwest.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on this call who wishes to speak that did not register prior to the meeting? Doesn't appear so. If no one else, I'm gonna move on. Item five is presentations, 5A, we have the president of CNM, Tracy Hartzler. Are you on the call, Tracy?
Yes, stand by, Mr. Mayor.
There you are.
Tracy, please introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then you can go into the presentation.
Of course, good evening, trustees and members of the public who are in attendance at the meeting. My name is Tracy Hartzler, I'm the president of Central New Mexico Community College. One of our board members, Virginia Trahijo, Trahijo, I believe, represents your district.
Yes.
CNM, as you may know, formerly of TBI, but CNM serves about 35,000 students and adult working learners and high school students here in the central New Mexico area, so Burnaleo and parts of Sandoval counties. Gosh, I mean, I could, I could tell you more about the college, which you know, but I'm, I've been, I guess it's not recent anymore. I was appointed to serve as the sixth president of CNM by the governing board last November, I started my term January 1st. And I mean, I was at, they knew I would be prepared to lead such an established institution during a pandemic, start of a recession, and some civil unrest, they absolutely knew that I was capable of navigating these challenging waters. No, no one knew that, and so I'm very fortunate that I accepted the position certainly graciously, with much guidance and leadership from our governing board, and certainly after an incredible tenure of Dr. Kathy Winograd. So I have been at the college for a little over five years, before that I served as a staff member in the New Mexico Legislature on the Legislative Finance Committee. I'm an attorney by training, I've been in higher education for a number of years, I've worked as a lawyer for tribes, state and local governments. I served in federal government in the US Senate as a staff member, so I have a long history of public service and certainly in student education policy, and I'm incredibly honored to be able to serve CNM and certainly our community, so.
So Tracy, do you want to go through your presentation?
I would love to, if I may, share my screen, and so thank you for inviting me here this evening. Let's see, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry. I'll start from the beginning, so thank you. There we go. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm here to briefly discuss, many of you know there's an election coming up on November 3rd, and perhaps some of you have already voted. But among the many issues that you and our public will be deciding on November 3rd are a number of the ways that the state will support senior centers, libraries, and certainly colleges and universities. Bond C, so there are three bond issues, as I just mentioned, Bond C serves higher education. Of the $156 million of the construction and infrastructure projects, as you can see here, we're excited that it'll serve about 23 different cities, we have about 20 community colleges and universities, and what we call the School for the Blind, School for the Deaf, and some of our tribal schools are also represented. The projects are included in this initiative. As you can see here, there is no tax rate increase on the bond, so again, the capacity for the debt service for the community was flat as in prior years, and so there's no tax rate increase. As I mentioned, these projects will create, we estimate, about 1,500 jobs throughout the state. And again, it will help most of us, certainly the colleges, with the number of our infrastructure projects. Importantly for CNM, it will, it will provide $13 million in support to help us reimagine how we serve our students. The local board, local voters, and you may remember from 2019, voted in support of an 18, 84 million, I'm sorry, an $84 million capital local general obligation bond for CNM. Of the many projects in that, in that $84 million bond was support for our Student Services Center. This in Bond C coming up in November is another matching $13 million. So what we will do is look at, we have, we're currently on our main campus, we have a very large old facility. So that needs to, the needs of that facility need to be addressed, we, and in that building, we house a number of our key services for students. Anything ranging from financial aid and admissions to enrollment to our adult basic ed programs. Also, our Veterans Resource Center, our Disability Resource Center for many of our students. And so in that, so how can we still provide those services? Particularly now, when so many students are remote, we've been working on ways to come up with, I would say, a smaller building that we can have some of these key functions on our main campus, but also figure out ways to better use our excess space on, excuse me, a number of our other campuses throughout, throughout the taxing district, particularly at West Side and perhaps Montoya. So we're looking to replace that old, our current facility with a smaller new facility to renovate our existing space, and then honestly, to tear down the old Student Services Center and make room for what we think will be our trades, our trades programs that are coming up. What can you do to to participate or support this bond question? Well, certainly, we encourage you to go and vote for the Higher Education Bond C. You can find more information about the project, both at CNM and also on our other higher, on our other institutions on our websites posted here. Again, you already know that mail-in voting has started, early voting will start this week, and you know the election's November 3rd. So what I wanted to do is just say thank you for your attention, and also to request that you all get out and vote if you haven't, and that you vote on Bond C.
Tracy, this is Mayor Donald T. Lopez. Just one question for you.
Of course.
I've known many individuals who have attended CVI at CNM and also the TVI in the past, and they've all spoken very highly of your instructional courses and folks who teach and everything, and I understand you have a lot of needs. What is the enrollment? What is the current enrollment? You didn't mention that.
Oh, of course, I'm sorry, so our current enrollment this fall is a little over 21,000 students.
Okay.
Our enrollment is down this fall about 7%. The national average for community colleges is about 7 or 8%, so we're in line with our national, the national statistics. A number of other institutions are also challenged. When we've looked at that, and when we've looked at the reasons why, there are three predominant reasons, one is the pandemic. People are just too uncertain about their own household situation related to COVID, whether it's their employment's impacted by COVID, or they themselves are caring, or in their household have other vulnerable individuals in their household. They're also impacted. Many of our students and employees have children. And so that has impacted our enrollment, because many individuals are trying to figure out how to work and care for their children.
Right.
For them. And then also, we've, we've experienced a decline, about 800 students of, commonly, we have high school students who take what we call their dual enroll.
Right.
But they also attend CNM. And about, and because of the late start, because of the fact that most of those schools are, students are remote, a number of those students are not taking classes this fall. We're seeing an upturn in the spring from those students, but this fall was just too, too challenging, so.
So Tracy, one, one final question from me. How many veterans are enrolled at CNM, do you have a feel for that number?
I do. We are one of the larger, we are one of the larger, well, CNM is the largest undergraduate institution in the state. But we have a little over 1,000 to 1,500 veterans. And those are veterans, and we certainly have family members of veterans who attend CNM. But we serve anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 veterans each term. And certainly, we're working with them through a variety of programs, but we work mostly with those veterans who are, who have a number of skills and credentials that they've, they've completed in the military. We try to get them as many credits as they can, and so really shorten that, just that time to degree, and to be able to get them out in the workforce as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Does the governing body have any questions for Ms. Tracy Hartzler at this time? Anybody from the governing body? Tracy, I want to thank you for taking time to make this presentation. And we hope you're successful, we hope that the voters will, will be, you know, honest and understanding of your needs, and move on from there, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, and please have a good evening, thank you.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna move to item six, which is the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. 6A are the minutes of the September 9th, 2020 regular meeting. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I need a second. Any discussion? I'm gonna call for the question. I'm gonna call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rael.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven is departmental reports. A through F, starting with the mayor's report and ending with the Public Safety liaison report. At this time, I would like for trustees to ask any particular questions that they want to. The departmental reports are included in the packet and reflect activities for the period listed in the individual reports. So at this time, does the governing body have any questions for staff regarding the reports? If so, we'll have each trustee ask all their questions before we move to the next trustee, trustee Rael.
Yes, I have several questions, first one is for Ann Simon. I'm wondering on the CARES Act, how many apps did you receive?
Yes, Mayor and trustee Rael, we received approximately 50 applications. We haven't tallied all of them yet, some were only partial applications, the first page without the supporting documentation. But we did receive about 50, we have money for 100, so we will have to determine what we do to reach out to more businesses, and, and it might mean potentially extending the deadline.
You sent out several, quite a few letters, right? That's all you people that responded, or the businesses that responded, which is what you expected, or?
Yes, Mayor, trustees, we sent out one letter to every business with the application attached. We notified people by email, we sent an email to every single business owner. We put notices on our Facebook and social media and on our website.
Okay.
Go ahead, trustee Rael.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Question is for Tiffany.
Okay.
For actually, I don't know if he's here, but.
Tiffany may be able to answer, Keen is not.
All right, we, there's quite a few, not quite a few, but several large illegal signs now that, for the political signs in the village, and nothing's been done to bring him down, what is, why is it not being addressed?
I may be able to answer that question, but Tiffany and Nan Winter, you may need to respond. Four years ago, when we had another election, our attorney was Mr. Bill Chapel, and he advised the late mayor and the administration that we could not enforce our sign ordinance for political signs regarding size. Nan, are you aware of that opinion?
Mayor, no, I was unaware of that opinion, but I do have all of Mr. Chapel's work product in our office, I could probably put my eyes on it and refresh that, that research.
I think that would be appropriate, because I've noticed the same thing, there's some really large signs out there. However, I have to tell you, during the November 2019 election, there were even billboards, so there were large signs at that time. So this is nothing new, it has been going on for the last four years. Trustee Rael, does that help you in any way?
No, I just don't recall that they had ever said that we could not, that they could, the last I remember, our ordinance said there were supposed to be two by eight, I'm sorry.
Yes. And I don't. Nan, Nan Winter, I think you'll be able to help us there, right?
Mayor and trustees, I can also weigh in. We, Keen has gone and spoken to people with larger than our sign ordinance permits, including banners. So we have sent letters and spoken to those who have large signs or banners.
Okay. Good. Go ahead, trustee Rael.
They're not taking him down, would it? Can you just take him down?
I don't know, if I recall, trustee Rael, and Nan Winter might help me here too. We were told four years ago that we should not touch signs. But again, that, that's, that's a legal question.
Mayor, I'll take a look at it as soon as, I'll take a look at it tomorrow. You know, I would, I would hate to see you take down a sign and then get sued.
Exactly.
I'll turn it around tomorrow.
I do know that the Department of Transportation takes down any sign that is illegal in any of the, the right of way for an MDOT.
Yes, that's correct.
See why anyone else couldn't. But, okay, thanks, Nan. I have a question, we got, or just comments regarding the the marijuana and hemp cultivation. And I guess that's for Tiffany also. I am totally against it. I know that in order to grow it, they have to have large greenhouses, and they have to be temperature controlled, because they, they want to grow it year-round. And they also have to have wells to irrigate these. So it would kind of do away or make the sequester useless if they have wells everywhere. And I know that, that as soon as it's legalized, and probably will be in the next legislature, people are gonna be looking for open space to start growing it, because there's a lot of money involved. So I think we really need to move along, and I know tonight there was some, some things we could look at, but I'm totally against either hemp or marijuana growth in the village in cultivation or processing.
So Tiffany or Ann, do you want to comment on that at all?
Mayor, trustee Rael, trustees, so this is exactly the kind of feedback that we would like to receive. There's three questions for the board in the department report, and, and we're hoping to just get feedback on all of them. That way, we can start drafting an ordinance to take before the trustees.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for you, I have some, a question for, is Fred here tonight, or?
I don't know if he is.
Mayor and trustee Rael, he is not able to join us tonight.
Well, maybe you can answer the question, today there was at least maybe 20 or 30 motorcycle cops and unmarked cars going like in a parade with sirens and lights going, do you know what was behind all that?
Mayor and trustee Rael, trustees, I do not know, but I will find out.
Because they came by, ran in front of my house and turned on Osuna, and they, they actually blocked the road on Fourth and Osuna, and did not allow people to go across it. I don't know what was going on, but it looked to me, what happens usually a parade or a dignitary coming to town, or maybe a death of one of their, their own, I don't know what happened, there sure was a lot of them.
Okay, we'll find out.
Okay. And then that's it until we get to the, to the cash report. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question tonight is, let me get here. Is for Ann. The first one Pablo covered, and that's on, on how the CARES Act and the grant money was going. I guess I'm a little surprised. You, you would think more companies would be turning out and filling out the paperwork like they need to. But that's surprising to me. Secondly, I want to compliment everybody at the Village Hall for the pickleball courts. I've gotten calls from a few people that are very excited and very happy. Do you have any, where are we at or what's our intention with the old Village Hall? You know, obviously that's come off the, selling that property. So do we have any plans at this point with the old Village Hall?
Ann, you're in a good position to answer that question.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Trustee Lewis. I was, I felt like I got some pretty clear instruction from you all this summer that, that we didn't, A, have the money, nor were we really inclined to spend the money to do anything with the old Village Hall, except to sort of hang on to it. I did get a sense that there was not a consensus on selling the property. Therefore, we decided to at least create a more user-friendly atmosphere around the basketball court. Which is why we re-landscaped it, we power washed it, we fixed the fencing and restriped it for pickleball. We also kept the keyhole for the wheelchair basketball league that plays there on Tuesday nights. So I feel like for really virtually very little money and mostly done in-house. We were able to salvage that space and create opportunities for more use. We bought some nets and some paddles and balls, and those are available for village residents to, to borrow out of Village Hall. And we hope the phone starts ringing. Regarding the facility, we, we are not touching that facility. I know we have had some conversations with the Boy Scouts and they are very interested in working with us on cleaning it out. Maybe opening, opening it up to, for more groups to use. And I think, you know, when, when we're all allowed to get back together, it might be a nice opportunity. Or at least alternative for HOAs and other organizations besides the Village Chamber.
Could, could I make a comment?
Go ahead, Trustee.
As I indicated to you, Ann, when we did the tour, I think it's a fire trap. I really believe that it should be demolished and maybe find another place for the Boy Scouts. But I don't believe we should be using it anymore than we have already. I, I like the idea of the pickleball courts and utilizing the paved area there. But I don't think the building is worth keeping and I don't, I don't think we should use it at all. It's really a risk for us, I believe.
Okay, Trustee Lewis, any other comments on departmental reports?
I, I, first I would, I second what Pablo just said. I agree with him totally. So my next questions are for Tiffany. First of all, I'd like to thank you. Your reports on permits and, and activity that's going on are outstanding. So I really appreciate that, Tiffany. It, it helps us understand a lot more of what's going on. Secondly, let me see where my question is here. On the reviewing and proposals, so are we redesigning our website? Is that what is in Jennifer's report?
Trustee Lewis, trustee of mayor, yes. We are looking to redevelop the website. You may recall that Jennifer spoke to you all about a website or a web service that would handle our business licensing. So the process, so we, we looked into that. She spoke with a company and we were going to move forward with that. And then realized that their services weren't quite what they had advertised at first. And for a similar cost, we could redo the website and include a permit payment portal that would allow both businesses to renew and our other permits, like building permits and fence permits to be able to be paid online. So it's more bang for our buck if we go the website redevelopment way.
And, and how's that coming?
So she is working to get some quotes. And once we have the quotes, we'll be able to proceed with selecting the company.
Okay. Next, I'd like to address your three questions. And, and I, I believe the village should prohibit, prohibit the cultivation of marijuana and hemp. I think we're an agricultural village, but I don't think we need to bend over for that kind of agriculture. I, I just, I don't think anything beneficial will come to the village from raising that kind of agriculture. And and I, I would just ban it and production from the village completely. So that's, that's my opinion on those. My last question is for Maria. Is she still on? Yes, she is.
Yes, I am.
Okay, Maria, could you go into a little bit more detail on the ADA changes on Fourth Street? And then talk about who's going to pay for it?
So we have submitted, as of today, we submitted all of our responses in reference to the issues raised in the NMDOT walk through in July. And those were related to ADA access in the promenade. There was some concern about a standard of design that may or may not have been used in the longitudinal joints in the colored concrete portion of the pedestrian sidewalk. The height and width of steps and other ADA access issues. The documents we turned in today, George was able to provide us some backup documentation as a basis for design that are not NMDOT standards. We have submitted them to them, hoping that they accept them. If not, if they want everything NMDOT standard, we will turn it back to George for redesign of all of those elements. And then to Bradbury Stam for a cost and schedule for completion.
And is it just the promenade or is it all along Fourth Street?
So it is primarily the promenade, the longitudinal joint issue. The way that.
I'm afraid to even ask you what that is.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'll try to explain that to you. In the colored concrete, the stamping of the colored concrete, the pattern has some joints that run longitudinally along the pedestrian area. That the depth of those exceed the allowable depth per ADA for tripping hazard and most especially for wheelchair wheels to get stuck in a rut, if you will.
Okay.
So that's colored concrete stamped on both sides of the street. And then the step issues, the landing and step issues and ramps are all within the promenade area, Trustee Lewis.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Trustee Lewis. Trustee Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
So let's see, I'm going to just start with the first one. On your report, you talked about the, the building where Pop Fizz is. Did you find out anything on that?
Well, here's what I can tell you about Pop Fizz. Ann Simon and I went over there on October the eighth to meet with the Alvarez family. There's a son named Carlos Alvarez, who does all of the heavy lifting and the hard work there. But his dad, Rafael Alvarez, is really the person who's managing Pop Fizz. They have a concern that, well, obviously we found out that that property is for sale. And it's apparently owned by a trust. The trust is located in San Francisco. The trust wants $1.7 million for the whole property. Pop Fizz occupies 3,000 square feet of the 20,000 square foot building. So basically they're occupying about 15% of the property. Everything else is vacant. Mr. Alvarez and his son were told by the, the trust that the lease ended the end of August. They had a, a, I believe a two-year lease. They came into the village in the summer of 2018. They had a really nice grand opening, which I attended and I spoke at and all of that. They're now on month to month. So their concern is what's going to happen to them in the future. That's about all I can tell you tonight. He continues to call me and talk to me. And I'm trying to be as careful as I can in my response. But I will keep the Board of Trustees appraised of, you know, how things move in the future. I hope that's a good answer, a good enough answer for you.
So I'm assuming that also includes the furniture company, so it's the whole.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, it, thank you. That I just was kind of curious as to what was going on there. Let's see, Administrator Simon, just again, and I have the same questions as the other trustees had with regard to who's responded. Is the screening process working well? For the, for the ones that we have received, I know that, that there was a committee that was working on these.
Oh, yes, thank you, Trustee Pacheco and Board members. We, we are just receiving the grants right now. We are not screening them. If they, we will be screening them to the point where we are checking whether they have the documentation that we asked for, primarily a village license and some tax information. That's about it. We are trying to make this as easy as possible. So if they meet the criteria, we're going to consider them qualified. That's really all the screening. I think initially we had thought it was going to be a lot more difficult because the state was asking for receipts and they were going on a reimbursement system. They changed their tune a couple of weeks ago. Sort of actually after we had already sent out all of our letters to, they changed it from a reimbursement system to a dispersment. So, so they too are just wanting to deploy the funding. And so the point is, is to get the funding into the hands of those who need it, reinvigorate our economy. And just have the local governments help to facilitate that.
And has that been communicated to the businesses then? That you said the letter had already gone out when you were notified of the change?
Well, we have sent every business who has an email, which was probably about 90% of the businesses, the new application and the new criteria. But as much as you all can be our emissaries and help get the word out, if we do indeed extend the deadline, that would be wonderful.
And maybe we do need to come up with a plan to, you know, just to advertise it a little bit more, however that is. Okay, thank you.
Trustee Pacheco.
Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to ask, Ann, so if you don't get all the money distributed, does it go back? Or will you consider going, including businesses above 50 employees?
Oh, Trustee Lewis and Board members, the, the, the 50 cap on employees and the $2 million in revenue cap is a federal standard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Pacheco.
Sure, you bet. With regard to the economic development, where you are talking about the holiday stop and shop. Is that being planned for an in-person stop and shop? Or are we looking at a virtual, just based on where we are these days? What, what are, what are you thinking?
Thank you, Trustee Pacheco and Mayor Board members. This is not a village sponsored event. This is done by a private organization, primarily of businesses along Fourth Street. We are, we sponsor quote unquote by helping to pay for design services of the brochure and advertisement on our website and in our village magazine. They, the organization has chosen to do an in-person stop and shop.
Okay.
Per the governor's standards or restrictions on entry and percentage of occupancy, et cetera.
Wearing masks and all that.
Right, okay. And then the trailhead improvements, can you go into just a little bit more detail with regard to that? Where, you know, you, you mentioned Cañada Pajarito and the bike path. Can you just talk a little bit more about that?
Sure thing, Trustee Pacheco and others. There is a city managed bike path that goes north, sorry, east-west along Paseo del Norte, right behind the Cañada del Pajarito neighborhood street. There is an access point right at the bridge of, of Fourth Street and Paseo. And you access it on Cañada del Pajarito. So it is that access point that we want to improve. We've heard from cyclists that they want to stop in Los Ranchos, but there's no signage. So they end up riding right by all of our access points onto our streets. And so we want to add some signage that tells people that there's businesses down fourth they can access, that they can, they can access the, the bike path that goes in front of Steel Bender, along that big levee there. We want to connect them with other trails within the village. We want to potentially have a food truck nearby for people to peel off and get a refreshment. And just generally improve that little trailhead. We can do that simply with parking bumpers, kind of organizing the parking area there. But currently it is owned by DOT. So that's our biggest problem right now because we have a use agreement to manage the, the trailhead. So there, but there are very, very specific things that we can and cannot do. And so we're currently working with DOT to understand, you know, what they'll allow us to do.
Great, thank you. Let's see, okay, next couple of questions just for Fergus, and I saw that you're on there, Fergus. With regard to, I see that Matt Kuchar and Kelly Jo Kuchar are going to use some of the, the grapes that are grown at the Agri Nature Center. I'm just curious, are they going to do certain varietals or are they going to do blends with, with the grapes?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, Trustee Pacheco. And they are going to use the grape variety that we have at the Ag Center. We've only one variety, so that's the variety they're going to use.
And what is that?
Ann, can you help me out? My mind is going, kind of variety.
We got a, we got an analysis that it's a Cabernet Sauvignon.
Great, that's awesome. Okay. And then one other question for you, Fergus, with regard to the one acre field that's being plowed. What type of grass is going to be planted on, on that one acre?
It's called Brutus grass, so it's a grass for baling.
Okay, and is that, is that something that's already been done on that acre?
When I came to the property, it was pretty, like it was a, it looked like a piece of land that had been, what's the word?
Fallow?
Yeah, fallow, so it needed some work. So this is kind of our first time to get, get and do this, so.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next one, this is just with regard to the questions for the Board of Trustees with regard to the, the commercial cultivation of hemp and marijuana. And I agree with the other two trustees who have spoken, Trustee Lewis and Trustee Rael. I also feel strongly that we need to prohibit all commercial cultivation in the village. So I just wanted to make sure that that was pointed out. And let's see, just some real quick questions and I know Fred's not here, but I was just curious about the study, the traffic study on El Pueblo and, uh, or Fourth and Ortega. Has that been?
And you know something about that?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mayor and Trustee Pacheco. We, we have asked the Mid-Region Council of Governments to do a traffic study for us. Um, it is my understanding that they have completed the study. We just haven't been able to schedule some FaceTime with them. But, so we, we were just waiting for the results.
Okay, but it's done, to your understanding. Okay. Uh, I think that was all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini?
Yeah, I'm you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Trustees, uh, and staff, I have a few, a few questions or, or, and comments. Uh, first on the, um, on the, uh, on the funding uh, for the CARE Act. What happens to the excess money? And are we able to hold it in a suspense account for future businesses that might move into the village? Or to help those existing? Or does it go back to the state?
Uh, Mayor and Trustees, we have, um, a limitation of, um, the, the limit is the funding, um, has to, um, cover March 1st to December 31st. So I believe we can, we can distribute past December 31st if it is for an expense. Um, incurred March 1st to December 31st. Um, we do have to give back any money that isn't spent. So we are hoping to spend it all.
And so, and, uh, can you, I don't know, I, I, if I missed it, I'm sorry, but was there a number of, of businesses that we mailed out to?
Uh, over 500.
Over 500? And it's, if I remember correctly, it was the 19th, I think it's due, is that right?
Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Weren't they due on October 13th then?
Yes. So the deadline has come and gone, but because we only got half as many as we were hoping, we have the option to extend the deadline.
Okay, so, so you received about 10, 250 so far?
No. We only had funds if we gave the full 10,000, um, for about 100 businesses and we got 50 applications.
Yeah, 50 out of, out of 500?
Yes.
Okay, and what's our deadline to, uh, either get it, get it, uh, distributed or give it back?
December 31st.
December 31st. Okay. Thanks, and, uh, I hope we can get it dispersed. It's gotta, it, it just feels like it's gotta be a, um, a knowledge situation, but maybe not.
Trustee Ricabini, this is, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to give us the list of the applicants? So we know who has it? Where, all of us know different business people in the village.
Good point.
You know, we can go out and say, man, you're not on this list. Why aren't you on this list? I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, Trustees, yes, I, um, we haven't even analyzed as a, as a committee. Yet, we were kind of waiting for the last few to trickle in. Um, but as soon as we get a listing, um, we can, um, send out all the ones that did not apply and see if you want to make some calls. That would be fantastic.
And start processing those who did, did, uh, apply. Okay, good. Um, next one is, um, Ann on, on, uh, the old village, uh, I'm almost wanting to call it the Old Village, uh, Hall, uh, Park. Um, it seems, and, um, a question, was the, uh, the, the building that was kind of falling apart behind Village Hall? Um, was that removed in cleanup?
Um, Trustee, um, Ricabini, thank you. Um, we have not done any demolition. Um, it's my understanding that we were just trying to kind of, um, you know, tighten our belt this fiscal year and not spend any money on the facility whatsoever. So we did all of the cleanup in-house except the striping of the court. And so we were just, even the, the, um, repair of the fencing, we did in-house. Um, Keen and all our crew worked really hard for about two weeks to clean that whole place up and they did a great job. Uh, I have spoken to the Boy Scouts and, um, I've expressed my concern about that building and, and, and all of your concern about that back building, the, the storage building behind Old Village Hall. And everybody agrees it's really in, in bad shape and needs to be demolished. Um, I guess I've just been waiting for sort of a thumbs up from you all to do that.
Do we have any numbers on that yet on what the cost of demolition would be?
We do, and I can get that to you. Uh, Keen had those estimates done.
All right, then on the, and on the Village Hall itself, I think Pablo brought up a good, uh, a good point, you know, we, we looked at that pretty tight and, and I, so I have to concur also with Trustee Lewis and, uh, and Trustee Rial about taking down Old Village Hall. But the more I, the more I'm listening to what's going on with Village Hall, with the Village Hall kind of park area, it seems like it is a, it is a real jewel. And I'm, I'm glad we're always looking for open space. Um, but wouldn't it be something to go ahead and replace the Old Village Hall just as a long-term thinking? Um, replace that Old Village Hall with another building that is similar to the Old Village Hall. It doesn't have to be big or tall or anything else. It could be the same size. And then we've got adequate storage and, and, and something that's safe for, you know, people like the Boy Scouts or whatever other group, um, that we have that wants to, uh, wants to utilize it. I question the difference between the old, new Village Hall at the Old Village Hall Park and our barn and how we're utilizing those two and where we're putting our money. Um, but I think from our discussions though, the, that the barn is, is heavily utilized. So on, for special events, is that, is that correct?
Uh, Trustee Ricabini, I would say that, um, the barn is, is a great space during the warm summer months.
Right.
Um, it's really not even usable during the winter months because of the inability to heat it. And there are no bathrooms in that facility.
Right.
So it has a very limited use. It'd also be very expensive to put bathroom facilities there and to enclose it, um, to become a true community center. Um, same with, um, Old Village Hall, be very, very expensive. There's asbestos and lead as you all saw when you, when you toured the facility this summer. Um, there's some other problems with the facility, so, um, but there's, there's, um, heat, there's, there's bathrooms. Um, so there are advantages to having a nice enclosed space, um, that we can easily, you know, um, give a community group a key to and not have to worry about expensive equipment and, um, being inside a government facility like they would if they were coming into the village chamber.
Okay, so, so again, though, uh, a safety aspect of the Old Village Hall. And, uh, maybe we ought to be, uh, quickly thinking about, um, what to do to keep the Boy Scouts safe. And then get rid of the Old Village Hall and maybe put something in its place. Just a comment from me and that's, that's what I would like to see us do. Um, the, uh, next one on, uh, for Tiffany. Um, the, thank you for pushing on the short-term rentals. Um, I'm really looking forward to understanding how we're going to be moving forward on that. Um, the, uh, again, I, it seems like a robust, uh, permits. Man, oh man, that's a, there's a lot of, of, of item, things are happening. So that's cool. Um, is that, is that more than usual?
Uh, Trustee Ricabini, could you, uh, clarify which types of permits?
The, the, the building permits?
Oh, um,
Project permits.
Actually, uh, September was actually a quieter month for building permits compared to normal. Um, so, and a- as I mentioned in my report, it's likely due to increasing construction costs. But, uh, we, we do have folks who, especially these days, want pools, actually.
Cool. All right, um, also I want to echo the, uh, the thoughts of the rest of the trustees about prohibiting, um, uh, growing and processing of, of hemp and, and cannabis products. And, uh, I think that we very quickly could be having an awful lot of that happening and lose our, and lose our, um, um, uh, kind of a direction that we want to be going. So we're in a prime spot in the middle of Albuquerque and between, uh, Rio Rancho and Albuquerque, and it would be, uh, exactly the target. And that being said, is, is, do we have any, anybody operating right now in the village?
Uh, Trustee Ricabini, Trustees, Mayor, um, as far as we are aware, there is no one, uh, who is commercially cultivating, uh, cannabis in the village. Um, there are cannabis affiliated products sold on Fourth Street. Um, like C D, CBD oils, um, but no one that we're aware of is, uh, growing for commercial purposes at this time.
Okay. Very good. Um, so we want to move forward on that, I would think then. And, um, let's see, uh, other than that, great job, um, everybody else, Maria and Fergus and, and I'm looking for the rest of our meeting. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Trustee Ricabini. Let's move on to financial business. Discussion and approval of the cash report for September 2020. Treasurer Will Fisher, please present the cash report. Is Will Fisher on?
Yes, he is on.
Hello, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, yeah, before you, uh, is the cash report for September 30th, 2020. Uh, ending cash balance as of September 30th, 2020 is $5,186,624.37, which is an increase of 183,251 and 12 cents for this month. Um, and year-to-date excessive revenues over expenditures is $8,343.61. Um, and then some unusual or significant items that Miss Tammy pointed out, but I'll, I'll turn it over to her.
Tammy, you wanted to read this?
Uh, yes, um, Mayor, Trustees. So I just wanted to point out in the unusual or significant items, um, that our year-to-date deficiency of revenue over expenditures decreased significantly from last month. Um, we actually moved us fro- to an excess of revenues over expenditures. And that was due to receiving, um, a little over $130,000 in reimbursement from the state for the grant that we closed out at June 30th for the utilities at the Agri Nature Center. Um, so I just wanted to kind of point that out as to why we had such a big jump, um, and moving us to an excess. And then I also pointed out, um, three different line items where we had some significant, uh, payments going out. Um, which are listed there on the first page of the cash report.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions about the cash report from the governing body?
I have a, just a couple.
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Ricabini.
The, uh, the, I know, I, I noticed the grant. I was very impressed and, and, uh, who, who worked on that grant from, from us?
Maria Rinaldi did a lot of the heavy lifting. Um, and, and Simon was involved, I was involved, uh, Fergus was involved. It was, it was quite the team effort, if you want to be truthful about it.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, because that is not an easy thing to do. And to go get that kind of money to bring into our village is just, uh, kudos to everybody on that and great job. Um, so that's awesome stuff. Um, and, um, and I also have to say, uh, that, you know, we worked hard on a, uh, budget. Um, that was a kind of a COVID-related budget. And I just seeing that really paying off for us right now, uh, Mayor and staff and trustees. And so, um, and, uh, you and, uh, uh, you guys did a fantastic job in, in, uh, really scrubbing that thing down and it shows in the rest of the cash report. So thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body on the cash report?
I have some.
Go ahead. Andrew, Pablo, go ahead.
Okay, uh, on page, uh, 30 of, of 173 on the cash balance summary, like, there are two accounts, 401 and 410, that appear to be the same thing, but one's a negative and one's positive. Could you explain that, please? Or you may have before, I just don't recall.
Tammy, do you know the answer to that?
Um, Mayor, Trustee Rial, yes. So for the 401, that is where we actually pay out our bond principal and interest payments. And so that deficiency shows, um, in 401, the 261,000, we've already made our principal payment for the year. And we've already made one of our two interest payments. And what that shows is it's, we, we start with a zero balance and we end with a zero balance. Um, the 410 is the reserve. And so what we do is we take any money that, at the end of the year, if we are still in a deficiency in that fund, we move money from the reserve into 401 to make that, um, a zero boundness.
Okay, thank you. And I have some other questions. If, do you want me to go into those now or?
Yes, go ahead, Trustee Rial. Let's do it.
Okay. Yeah, on page, um, 70 of, of, uh, 173, the question about, what is the, uh, hydro back, a thousand dollars for hydroback excavation? What is that about?
Uh, Mayor, Trustee Rial, um, that was for the rental of a hydroback to pump some streets after some, um, severe thunderstorms. Um, it was decided, I believe, a year or two ago when it came up that we may want to purchase our own, that we don't use it often enough. So anytime we need one, we just rent one out. We did get quotes on those from several companies and we made sure that we are using, um, the company that gave us the best rate per hour.
Okay. Thank you. Another on page 172, uh, there's a Diego Ruiz, a refund, you know, 1,506.574 cents. Can you explain that one, please?
Yes, Mayor, Trustee Rial, um, that was for a refund of a zoning review application, um, that they were charged incorrectly. I don't have the specific details. Tiffany may remember, um, what that was for. Tiffany, do you have additional information on?
Uh, yes, uh, Trustees, so that, uh, refund was, um, for a new residential build, um, which, um, actually it was not a new residential build. They had gotten the original permit about a year or so ago. They didn't build that and then they were reapplying, um, with essentially the same plans. They actually were reducing the square footage. Um, so we, we thought that this was a new set of building plans, so we charged it appropriately. Um, however, this was actually a revision that decreased the original planned square footage. So it's a much, uh, more reduced fee, uh, that, in that case, it's just a change fee.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any other trustees with, uh, Trustee Pacheco?
Um, I just wanted to echo, uh, Trustee Ricabini's, um, thanks and, and hard work for both the staff and, uh, everybody involved in terms of curtailing the spending on the budget this year and staying on budget. And I think it's been just a great exercise for the future when, you know, when things are looking better. I, I think we all agree that we've done, the staff has done a great job in, in, in this exercise. So, uh, I also wanted to, to say how lucky and fortunate we are to have applied for these grants, uh, that has helped us through this year and helped us. that has helped us through this year and helped us work through kind of the things that, you know, we were kind of all in question about at the beginning of this year. And I think it just makes us stronger as a municipality, working through these kind of exercises and seeing what we could actually do. So I wanted to just commend the staff for doing such a great job.
Thank you. Any other comments from the governing body?
Sure, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Alan.
On page 30, for Tammy or Will, 410, the reserve. Do we have a targeted reserve that we want to keep in that account?
So mayor, trustee Lewis, the way that reserve account has worked is that when the bond was first purchased, when Gil was here, he and the old administration came up with looking at the property taxes that we get in monthly and the amounts we were getting, how much they thought we would need to actually cover our bond. And they saw that there was going to be a deficit. So at that point, they were putting in a certain percentage until they reached $1 million. I believe in 2017 is when they hit the reserve that they needed, and they were no longer accruing money into that account and setting some aside. So at this point, we are not putting any more money into that account. And based on the property taxes that we're getting and when this bond matures, the $862,000 that's in there right now, combined with the property taxes that we receive monthly, that should carry us and take us to have enough money to pay off the bond.
Okay, okay, as long as we're comfortable and we're looking at that. My next question is on page 31. Miscellaneous revenue's been pretty high. What's in miscellaneous revenue?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, so this month, we only got $120 in miscellaneous revenue. However, the largest portion that we received was the $10,000 that we received as an issuer's fee from the bond that we helped, I believe it was Albuquerque Academy with.
Right.
That was $10,000 that came in.
And that went into miscellaneous, okay. Page 36. Code enforcement. I see they're already at 56% of their budget. What ran that number up this month?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, what that line item is for, we actually added that line item this year for items that come up like the Toscosa property that came up at the end of last year. We hadn't had a specific line item to address any type of code enforcement issues that may come up during the year and that would potentially cost some money for the village to remedy. So that line item, the two expenses that went into that line item this year were expenses that were for the Toscosa property. That occurred at the end of last year. However, the invoices did not come in until after September 30th. And so by state statute, we only accrue items that come in through July and August. Anything that comes in, even if it was for the prior fiscal year, after July, I'm sorry, after August 31st, we do not accrue that. So that is what those two expenses were.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Any other comments, trustee Lewis?
Yes, I'm going through them here just real quick. Okay, so on page 69, when I look at general obligations bonds, that's showing that, so that's saying that we paid a principal for the year? Is that correct, Tammy?
Mayor, trustee Lewis, yes, that is correct. Our principal payment is due August 1st. So we've already made our $220,000 principal payment. One interest payment is also due August 1st. And we will have one more interest payment due on February 1st of about $48,000, $50,000.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
It looks like we've asked all of our questions.
One, so Mayor, if I could, please. I just, I wanted to ask if the trustees and Anne and Tammy, if you remember, when we put together the revised budget, did we have, did we have a trigger point where we started raising that budget in the future? Or did we leave it flat? Did we project out for a full year?
Mayor, trustee Rickabini, are you talking about the budget in total?
Correct. The revised budget, when we started tightening our belts up, did that have a end date in it? Or was it the full year that we kept everything going? In other words, did we anticipate an increase in income and so on and so forth in that budget?
I think I can try to answer that, but Tammy, go ahead.
Yes, mayor, trustee Rickabini, what we actually did is we anticipated for a full year of belt tightening with the intent of doing a mid-year budget review in December, after we've kind of seen the trend through the first six months of the fiscal year to see if we really did have the big hits in our budget, and I'm sorry, in our revenue that we anticipated, or if we were seeing less of a hit, we were going to address that in December with a mid-year budget review.
Thank you. I think that's wonderful, because I just want to, I just want to keep the hammer down on our plan, because I don't, what I'm seeing is this COVID's not over. And I know more people right now who are ill than I did the last time we talked about it. And I'm sure the rest of you are the same way. And so the effects of this are still unknown, long-term. And so to that end, we need to be careful. And I just, I'm glad that we put at least the December stopgap in there for right now. And so when we approach December, we're going to really kind of keep our conservative hat on, so.
Yes. Any more questions from the governing body? Okay, I do need a motion to approve the cash report.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the September 2020 cash report.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Trustee Rial.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
Motion carries. B, discussion and approval of resolution number 2020-10-01, Budget Adjustment Request, parentheses, bar. Tammy, please take us through this.
Mayor, trustees, what this bar here you're looking at is for, is for the CARES Act grants that the village has received. Anytime that we adjust our budget, we are required to do a resolution and send it up to the state to have it approved. And what you're looking at on this bar, there are four line items that are adjusted and affected. In the cash report, I'm not sure if you, I'm sure you guys noticed, on page, I believe, 52 of the BOT packet, there was a new department and four new line items under the 299 fund. And this is where we will be housing all of the revenues and expenses that are coming in for these funds. So what this bar is doing is it is increasing our budget for $50,000 of revenue for Village of Los Rancho's COVID expenses. And it is also increasing $50,000, I'm sorry, both revenue and expenditures for Village of Los Rancho's COVID expenses. It is also increasing the budget by $1,6,425 of revenue and expenses for Village of Los Rancho's business, small business grants. So we have four line items here that are all increasing our budget to go ahead and put that into the budget for the remainder of the year. And as Administrator Simon stated earlier, any money that is not used by December 30th of this year, we will have to revert back to the state.
Thank you, Tammy. Are there any questions from the governing body about this budget adjustment request? Go ahead, trustee Rial.
Tammy, in those four line items that you just went over, why do you list that one twice, the CARES Act? You use one CARES Business and CARES Business Grants.
Yes, mayor, trustee Rial, so if you look over into the next column where it says account, the two accounts that start with threes, those are revenue accounts. So that's where we're going to see the money from the state coming in. And then the two line items right below it where the accounts start with a four, that's where the expenses will go out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body? There be none. I need a motion to approve the budget adjustment request.
I approve. Adjustment request.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to call for the question. Call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rial.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Rickabini.
Yes.
Okay, the BAR is approved. We now go to nine public hearings. 9A is SDP 20-04, a request by Doug and Valerie Valhagen for a final site development plan approval of a residential site development plan for a development in the C1 zone in the Fourth Street character area. Property is located at 320 Roel Road Northwest and is legally known as Lot 1 Valhagen Valley Estates, being a replat of tracks 165B1B1 and 165B2A2A, MRGCD map number 27, situated within projected section 21 Township 11, range 3 East, 11 North, that is, range 3 East, NMPM, Elena Gago's Grant, Burnley County, New Mexico, as filed in the office of the Burnley County Clerk on July 13th, 2020. The property contains .5175 acres, more or less. Those speaking will be called upon and will be sworn in individually at their respective time. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in, Ms. Justice?
Tiffany, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Justice, please present the site development plan.
So mayor, trustees, this site development plan is for two two-story fourplexes. This would be a town home development at this property. The applicant has a few other permits for this development. There is a conditional use permit for multifamily residential. This conditional use is for a minimum of 10 dwelling units per acre and a maximum of 20 dwelling units per acre. The proposed design does accomplish this. The applicant also has a variance to allow for the second floor square footage of the buildings to be 80% of the first floor square footage instead of 60%. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7 to 0 to forward a recommendation of approval of this application. The surrounding uses are a combination of commercial and residential. And for the, and part of this application, actually, it was formerly zoned residential with a special use permit for a commercial building. And in order to have higher density residential, they needed to change the zone to commercial. So though this is a residential use, this is zoned commercial. And so the C1 zone requirements for height limitations, this building does comply. It's less than the maximum 39 feet allowed. Fences and walls, the proposed fences all comply with the height restrictions. The design regulations, the design meets the design regulations, both in the C1 section of the code and in our separate design regulation section of the code. The proposed colors and style that are shown in the elevations and the example development photo in the packet show a Northern New Mexico or ranch style with pitched roofs, awnings and stucco, and the colors will be muted. For the site development plan itself, the requirements for the site plan are included. No signage is proposed, and there is building security light noted on the plans around the building. Nailbox locations are shown adjacent to railroad accessible to USPS. One proposed bike rack is shown on the plans, and the total square footage, proposed uses, elevations, height from final grade, and exterior materials and colors are shown. The colors shown on the elevation are not the final colors. The example colors are shown with an example existing development. The grading and drainage plan was reviewed by the village designated engineer, corrected, and is attached in your packet. For roadway standards, there is no proposed roads through the site, and access to the site will be through two ingress egresses off of railroad. And a traffic impact study is not required. For parking, since this is residential, there is one space required per residence, and both the garage parking and the outside guest parking does meet this requirement. And the length and width requirements for the parking spaces are met. Loading and docking areas are not specified in this plan, but they appear to be available temporarily for folks who are moving in and out. The trash receptacles are shown on a concrete pad enclosed and gated for our requirements, and they are screened with the surrounding walls. And these trash receptacles are accessible by waste management, and they are required to be. For landscaping, 15% of the unbuilt area is required to be landscaped. And this plan shows landscaping well beyond the 15% required with a combination of, I guess, unedible landscaping as well as edible trees in the backyards. Maintenance is noted to be an automatic drip irrigation system, and the number of trees required, the number of trees shown on the plan also well exceeds what's required. For utilities, the applicant has a statement confirming water and sewer availability from the Water Utility Authority, and the applicant will install a fire hydrant on the north side of the property. And so with that, the Planning and Zoning Department recommends the board of trustees approve the residential site development plan for development, the C1 zone in the Fourth Street character area with the following conditions and findings. The conditions that the sections on paved private way and gravel private way must be met. Demolition of any existing structures must be completed within one year of the final site development plan approval. Any future signage must comply with the sign ordinance and sign permits must be obtained. Exterior lighting must comply with the dark skies ordinance. The final site development plan must meet Burnley County Fire Department requirements. Construction shall meet all current village, county, and state codes. And the final site development plan must be executed by the applicant with the findings that the proposed development meets the requirements of the C1 retail commercial zone and meets the requirements of our application and approval process and is supported by the village master plan in the village farm, environment, residential development, and transportation sections. And public notice requirements have been met. And I stand for any questions.
At this time, Ms. Justice, we will ask the opportunity to be given to the applicant. Is Mr. Doug Valhagen on the call?
Yes, stand by. Then mute, start video.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Valhagen. Ms. Winter, will you please swear in Mr. Valhagen?
Mr. Valhagen, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valhagen. Will you, you have the opportunity to present your your application and your plan to the board of trustees now, if you want to amplify on anything that Ms. Justice has said.
Good evening, mayor and trustees. Thank you for reviewing my site development plan. Quick review, I am an Albuquerque native. I've been a remodeling contractor for 23 years. This is my first development. My intention is to keep these townhomes. Basically, they're two-bedroom with 1.5 baths and some have two bathrooms upstairs. My intention is to do metal roof, stainless steel appliances, HVAC, granite countertops, stained concrete, and try and keep the amenities as nice as I can get them. Right now, these buildings are pushed to the west to try and accommodate as much space as I can to the residents on the east. And I'm not convinced on what And I'm not convinced on what Burna Leo County is going to say when they review the drawings. Because right now I've only got four feet. Which is allowable in village code on the west side between my building and the block wall. And I've never seen them issue a permit for less than five. So I'm just wanting everybody to know that I'm trying to keep a maximum distance on the east as best as I can. Uh, but that might change once I submit to uh the Burnley O County. And like all other contractors, I'm facing a huge increase in product costs. So my intention is to get this built as soon as I can, but currently most the original estimate on the property was done studs like a regular wood stud was two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And now it's six dollars and eighteen cents, which almost triples the lumber package alone. But I'd like to get them done, get people in the village and get uh uh customers to the the businesses on Fourth Street.
So Mr. Valhagen, I think this would be a good time if the trustees have any questions for you or for Ms. Justice to ask. Does the governing body have any questions? Okay, uh, are you through, Mr. Valhagen? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak in favor of this matter? If so, please let me know now. Apparently not. Is there anyone participating in this call who is opposed that would like to speak? Please let me know now. Apparently not. Are there any final questions or other comments uh from the board of trustees for either Mr. Valhagen or for Ms. Justice? The floor is now closed for comments. I need a motion to approve.
I would like to make the motion to approve S D P twenty dash zero four. With the findings by the planning department as noted in our packet.
Thank you. I need a second.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, I'm going to call for the question. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. Trustee Rayel.
Yes.
Trustee Lewis.
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco.
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini.
Yes.
The motion is approved. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Valhagen.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to move to item ten, which is old business. Ten A, approval of the development agreement between the Village of Los Ranchos to Albuquerque and Palendrome Communities LLC. The New Mexico Metropolitan redevelopment code grants powers to the village to promote developments within areas that have been deemed blighted and authorizes the village to adopt a resolution finding that a slum or blighted area exists. And the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the area is necessary. And in the interest of the public health, safety, morals or welfare of the residents of the village. The New Mexico Metropolitan redevelopment code requires that areas deemed blighted must have a metropolitan redevelopment plan adopted by the village for the purpose of removing blight prior to developing a project. The village board of trustees adopted such a plan on March fourteenth, twenty eighteen by resolution number twenty eighteen dash three dash two. As you know, the village's redevelopment plan proposes activities for the redevelopment of the village center project area. That will aid in the elimination and prevention of slum and blight, including but not limited to one, facilitating the redevelopment of the village center site. Two, improving area streetscapes within lighting, landscaping and other features. And three, providing for the installation of public art and signs to highlight our recreational and historic attractions. Shortly after adoption of the plan in twenty eighteen, the village issued a request for proposals to redevelop the village center site. And evaluated the proposals through a selection committee. After due consideration, the village suggests selected the Palendrome Community LLC as the developer for the property. On November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, the village and Palendrome Communities entered into a memorandum of understanding. Pursuant to which the developer was designated as the village center developer and agreed to negotiate a development agreement. In May of twenty nineteen, we agreed to extend the M O U and ultimately extended that M O U to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty. Which gets us to the document on today's agenda. Administrator Anne Simon, would you like to expand on this?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor and Trustees. Uh, we're really excited to get to this point. Um, thank you, Mayor, for giving us the history of how we got here.
Uh, Administrator, could I, I, I need to ask, uh, Nan Winter, I need to recu- do I need to recuse myself again? On this, in this item here?
Mr. Mayor, Trustee Rayel, uh, yes.
Okay.
Please, please recuse yourself, Trustee Rayel.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself from this, uh, because I own property on the, on the section that be. Also like to say that my home is not a blight or a slum.
I understand. Thank you. Go ahead, Administrator Anne Simon.
Yes, thank you. So we have spent a lot of time looking at a way to uh enhance economic development in the Village of Los Ranchos. Um, to create a fabulous bookend project for our fourth street improvement zone. Um, we've been working really diligently since I started in January with um Chad Veniker, uh, Palendrome Communities LLC. And we're really excited to be at this point today. Um, thank you to the board members for giving us lots of feedback throughout the development process. And um expressing your concerns and the concerns of your constituents. I think we've addressed all concerns in this agreement. We have um uh put lots of layers of protection for the village. And I feel confident that um we're going to have a really fabulous project when this is all said and done. So excited to be at this point. Um, I want to turn it over to uh Nan Winter, who authored the development agreement and also wanted to let you all know that Chad Veniker, our developer, is on the line and available to answer questions.
So Nan, you go ahead. Are you muted?
Mayor Trustees, what you have in front of you is about a twenty-five page. Purchase, sale and development agreement. Uh, it is modeled in large part after an agreement between the city of Albuquerque and Mr. Reniker. However, the terms and conditions of your deal are substantially different than other projects that Mr. Reniker has undertaken in New Mexico and in Albuquerque in particular. Your project um is is really best illustrated um on page twenty-nine of this agreement. And I'm going to take you to that, that, that exhibit B first. Because the rest of the document builds on exhibit B. Uh, and exhibit B is the development timeline. That was developed by Ann and Maria along with Mr. Reniker. And it really details the phases that are to be constructed. Along with the entitlements, the financing benchmarks, the site acquisition and the construction start. Uh, so fundamentally, why this one is so different than what Mr. Reniker has done in Albuquerque before is because usually he's had a prop, one property. Deeded to him and then he develops it. This case, there are six phases. So the contract that we worked out has to deal with each phase of construction. What his obligations are under each phase and what happens if he fails to meet any benchmark under any phase. So that required a, a bit of verbiage and some words and um his obligations related to this exhibit B begin on page seven. And continue through page ten. Uh, so at a very high level, his obligations include replating the land. Uh, getting plans and permits, getting titles and surveys. Uh, we do give him access to do some of that. Then we also, beginning on page eight of this agreement, discuss his construction. And his process and what happens if he doesn't meet each one of those benchmarks. And I call this in the construction, in this contract, the reversion events. Uh, and it was, um you know, I think Maria and Ann did a good job of negotiating this, but we wanted to protect the village's um interest in the event that Mr. Reniker did not meet the benchmark. So the reversion in events um identified on page nine of this agreement include uh that Mr. Reniker has not submitted an application in accordance with exhibit B. He, in other words, he hasn't done it timely. He has not constructed uh or commenced construction timely. Um, he has let construction sit idle for six months. He has not obtained a certificate of occupancy or he has failed to procure proof of insurance or performance bond uh in accordance with the rest of this agreement. If any one of those things happens at each, for each of the six phases, this real estate is immediately deeded back to the village. Okay? Um, this, this document contemplates that at closing, and there are potentially six closings because there are six phases. Uh, but at closing, the village will deed this real estate to Mr. Reniker phase by phase. At the same time at that closing, he will also be executing a deed, deeding the real estate back to the village. That deed will be held in escrow in the event there is another reversion event by Mr. Reniker. Other protections in this document include the requirement for insurance. He has to carry insurance, obviously. Um, we did negotiate a performance bond based on a percentage of the value of each phase that is completed. And uh, as is traditional in any agreement, there are also breach provisions in here. If he breaches anything. Um, we can terminate this agreement. That is sort of the high level. Um, and again, I, I, I point your attention to exhibit B. If you have questions about exhibit B, I'm going to send you back to Ann and Maria. Again, that was, that was the foundation for um the writing you see in front of you now. If you have any questions about any detail in the document, I will take that question. Otherwise, if you have an exhibit B question, I would send you to Ann and Maria.
Thank you, Nan. Uh, I understand Chad Reniker is on the call. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is he available to speak if he wants to?
Standby.
Uh, Mayor and Trustees, while we're getting Mr. Reniker online, uh, I just wanted to mention a couple of uh reasons why um uh his firm was selected. Um, one of the things that we have heard um time and time again from residents is that we don't have a lot of housing options in the village. Um, so we're really excited that he's, um, that this mixed use development will provide some new housing units, some, some, some um affordable housing as well as some senior housing. It's also going to provide some needed retail. And economic development center and possibly a new lodging establishment. So um, all of those uh new developments within this center are expected to provide an economic impact back to the, back to the county of about fifteen point seven million dollars a year, one hundred and forty-five point seven million in the first ten years. And about ninety percent of those impacts will be captured by the Village of Los Ranchos.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Reniker, welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting.
Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes, very, very well. Would you like to say anything at this time before I ask the governing body to ask questions of either Ms. Simon, Maria Rinaldi or uh Nan Winter? Would you like to say anything or you, for, for example?
Sure, I'd love to. Um, I, I think that, you know, I won't get into a presentation about the, the project. I think we've all seen it and um it's a great project. I, I hope everyone agrees with me on that. It has, it has everything that uh one could ask for, and I think this is a very complicated project. And I want to, I really should commend Ann and uh Maria and Nan. This, it's not easy to draft an agreement that I get what I need so that I can move forward with a project this complicated, but also protects the village. Um, having this phased development is really tricky. And there's a lot of tricky real estate uh moves that have to be made so that we can accomplish everything that we want here and take into account the timeline uh of which phases will be done strategically first and which will be done later. So I'm, I'm uh I'm, this sounds weird, but I'm proud of the development agreement that we've put together here and um, and I'm, I'm hoping it gets approved tonight.
Well, Mr. Reniker, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you briefly and, and everybody on this call from the mayor's perspective. First of all, it's a remarkable agreement. Let me chat briefly about risks and rewards. The village spent taxpayer money to acquire the properties at the site. The developer will provide risk capital, will bring expertise in financing, construction and marketing. And otherwise do the heavy lifting to create a successful project. The rewards to the village are an improved property that meets the goals of the M R A plan and the master plan. With new economic development opportunities, new housing options and a center that maximizes the urban space while honoring the rural and agricultural surroundings. So with that, I'd like the governing body to ask their questions of our staff or Mr. Reniker. Please go ahead. Who wants to talk first? Any, any of you?
Sure, I'll go first.
Go right ahead, Trustee Lewis.
My questions for, for Nan Winter. Nan, um, I, I, I expressed a little bit of concern in this document and, and you addressed it in some places. I felt like it was a little vague for both parties. When we have you know, we, we have paragraphs in some places that say the village will provide written notice. But it doesn't designate anybody in particular. And, and I felt like that, that was a little vague. You know, other places in the agreement. It says the developer will obtain the village administrator's signature. And, and so I know there were some changes made from the original document we got last week. And I wanted to make sure that you all are satisfied that those areas have been cleared up to everybody's satisfaction. You know, I, I would think it would protect you, Mr. Reniker, that the right people are saying okay or no to something. Or getting the information that they need to and that you're getting the sign off you need to get on stuff. As well as we know, the right people are looking at the things and following up because this is a long-term project. And, and so I know some changes have been made and I wanted to make sure everybody's comfortable that all those changes have been covered.
Nan, would you like to address this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, Trustee Lewis. I did expressly indicate who gets notice when, and I am pulling up the document now. Uh, I think uh you, you indicated a concern here while we were still negotiating and I addressed it with an edit. Hold on, I'm trying to, I'm searching the document to find it. But you are right. I, in certain places, we require notice to the administrator and the mayor. Um, in certain other places, we, we you changed that up a bit, but there but there is a provision in here. Like, for example, under 3.1, we do require that any change in the parcel plan or the development timeline has to be approved by the mayor and the village administrator. I am still looking for a section where I added language. Let's see. That said, for the sake of, you know, if not directly identified who gets approval or who's required to approve, then approval shall mean the administrator and the mayor. But I'm looking for that language right now. You know, I'm, I'm searching the document for key words here.
Attorney Winter, could you change the, could you just add the definition to the village to incorporate that on, on definition number PR?
You know, I don't, I don't know if we can just amend it. I mean, I'd like to see us get this approved tonight. I know everybody would. And I just, I did not see that general information in here.
Is it at the, is it the last sentence of the notice section, Nan?
That sounds like where I put it, but I'm, I'm still searching here. If you could move to the next question, and I'll keep looking while we're, while we're, we're getting there. I apologize, but I do-
Do you have any other questions?
I do know that we add, we address that concern specifically, trustee Lewis.
Okay. Yeah, my other question. Let me find it here.
I'm here, trustees, and Nan, back to the previous question. I believe it's on page 23 of the agreement, page 154 at the bottom.
I did not see it on that page, but.
Ah, it's under-
I'll ask my next question while Nan's looking.
Okay.
In the reversion events-
Yes, sir.
Number C, no construction activity on the relevant project phase. I felt like there needed to be a little bit more something there. I mean, technically, I guess you could come out and dig a big hole and say, you know, you're still continuing even though nothing's really happened. And I didn't know if there's some way to put something that some percent of construction would continue or something more than just, I thought it was very vague that activity is just a very vague word. And I, I didn't know if there was something more that could be put in there.
So Mayor, trustee Lewis, I think you raised this question earlier. And previously, the language read, "Construction activity on the relevant phase has not occurred for any six-month period." And we talked about, and I'll leave this to Anne and Maria, but we did visit about putting percentages in there. But I think the, the conversation really landed on the fact that percentages is sort of in the eye of the beholder. And you would probably need an engineer to go out there and assess what's been done or what hasn't been done. So to make it less fuzzy, we made it crystal clear that if no construction activity has occurred for any six-month period, that is a reversion event. I mean, I, you know, I'll, I'll pitch that one back to Anne and Maria.
I would also add, Nan, that, keep in mind too, that that is a reversion event, but it's also a reversion event if construction does not complete.
Right.
That, that could delay the reversion event potentially, but if, if there's no construction activity for six months, there's a good probability that construction may not complete on time, and then there would be a reversion event anyway.
That's correct.
Okay.
So let me get back to your first question, and I knew I put this one in there. It's on, it's at section 15 dot 11. Mayor and trustee Lewis, under approvals, the last sentence in approvals indicates that unless otherwise specified, village's approval shall mean approval of the mayor and village administrator. But sometimes, we don't want to bother the mayor and the village administrator with something that is clearly within the wheelhouse of the village planning and zoning director. So when it's more of a ministerial act, you'll see some approvals by Tiffany Shop. When it's a policy issue or a version event or a breach or not otherwise specified pursuant to 5 dot 11, approval shall mean approval of the mayor and the village administrator.
Thank you, Nan.
Okay, okay. I'm satisfied with that.
Okay. Any other questions, trustee Lewis?
That, that's all I have. I want to compliment you all on doing a tremendous job on this document. I think it's an excellent document. And Mr. Rennecker, I think your proposal for the village center is, is excellent. It's a tremendous urban project, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Trustee Pacheco, you were going to ask a question?
I was. Nice to, to see you, Mr. Rennecker, and I apologize that I wasn't able to meet you in person. I just had a question. Well, first of all, I wanted to comment that we are super excited about this project and what it's going to do for our village, and, and we're happy that, that we're doing it with you. The one question that I did have when I talked to Anne Simon was about the traffic. I didn't really see a whole lot addressed with regard to the traffic on Fourth and Osuna. Have you thought of, and I'm sure you've thought about it, but how is that going to impact our village?
Well, I think that, I mean, traffic is kind of a general issue. First of all, I mean, and I guess it depends on one's perspective of whether traffic is a good thing or a bad thing. I think a lot of times we think it's a bad thing because we don't like traffic. For me, traffic is two things. It's, it's noise and it's speed. And one of the, one of the key elements of this development, I've talked about this a few times, is that we have these two major traffic arterials that surround this development, one on Osuna and one on Fourth. And the massing of this development was purposefully pushed to the edges of the development for those, for, for the reason of calming traffic. You know, studies have shown, and I've seen it in my own developments, that if you put larger masses in, in the area of traffic, that cars will slow down. And so that, that will help with the traffic noise and the, and the traffic speeds, to the extent that someone likes that. Now, sometimes if you're a commuter, you don't necessarily like that. But I think as far as a community goes and becoming pedestrian-friendly, those are all good things. You know, the, the question of the increase in traffic is always a tricky one. And, you know, it's, it's a double-edged sword because we want the village center to be successful. We want to draw people to it. And unfortunately, a lot of those people that come to it will come with vehicles. And so what's important is we, is we, in the development, that we think through the way the traffic moves through the development, and that parking is accessible and easy to get through, easy to get to, and it isn't congested. Because what we don't want to have happen is part, is traffic congest on Fourth as it enters into the village and causes problems and, and, you know, have big traffic, traffic holdups that go all the way down the south, south end of Fourth Avenue. But I think, you know, it's a very conceptual plan right now. We've done, as you can tell by looking at the site plan, we like to hide the parking, kind of tuck it behind buildings as more of a, more of an urban design. And we'll have to make sure that that traffic, that, that the vehicles inside the development itself move, move freely so we don't have any congestion.
Great. And, and was there some discussion too, in, in just looking at the site plan, making the entrance into this beautiful center, not necessarily close to the Fourth and Osuna corner, but maybe more so to the south?
Yeah, that's a second opt. I mean, the first choice, and we'll have to, you know, we'll have, we'll have a traffic study done, obviously, as we get into this. But the, the natural entrance, because of how I've located kind of the sexy part of the development with the micro retail, is really off Sandia View. But if the traffic study indicates there's a problem with that, we have the, the ability to move that further south and come in kind of on the southern edge of where the grocery store is. That'll require some rethinking. I mean, it's important to me that there's a real impact when, when people drive into this development that they immediately feel like they're in some new place, a different place. And I've geared everything, including the Asequia that's going to run down the boulevard to that Sandia View entrance. So I really hope we can do that. But if we can't, I'm going to have to rethink the southern end of it.
Very good. Fantastic. Well, I read through the, the agreement. It, it, it sounds wonderful in, in terms of protecting the village as well as, you know, giving some clear direction as to how this is going to transpire. Again, I, I just want to say that I'm super excited about this development and seeing it come to fruition. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Pacheco. Trustee Ricabini, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mayor, trustees. Mr. Rennecker, thank you very much for the, putting together a beautiful presentation, and your, your heart is clearly in this. I really appreciate your changes that you've made along the way to help us all along in, in understanding about how this is going to go through and, and, and give yourself some time and, and also make a good, make a good project. So congratulations. I think you've done a great job, and thanks for not running away from us. And we appreciate it very much. So I'm excited as well, and I'm looking forward to this project to go forward.
Thank you, trustee Ricabini. There being no further questions from the governing body? I need a motion to approve.
I would make a motion to approve the development agreement between the Village of Los ranchos and Paladrum.
Second. I need second.
Oh, second.
Any further discussion? Being none, I'm going to call for the question. Trustee Rayel has it recused himself. Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Pacheco?
Yes.
Trustee Ricabini?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Rennecker. You're now our developer for the village center, and we're looking forward to what you call and what all of us believe will be a fantastic development. Thank you very, very much.
We're partners now.
Thank you very much.
We are. Wonderful.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Let's move to item 11, announcements. There are none.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
Could I request a five-minute break?
Yes, you can. We will reconvene at two minutes after nine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's 9:02, so we can resume our meeting. Item 12 is new business. 12A is a discussion only. Short-term rentals in the Village of Los ranchos to Albuquerque. Planning and zoning director, Tiffany Justice. Go ahead.
Mayor, trustees, this document is a run-through of the, I guess, the issue of short-term rentals and some options that, and recommendations that, for routes that the village can take to address short-term rentals. This is a few months in the making, and there are a few key decisions that, that we're hoping to get some feedback on tonight. The first being absent versus onsite owners. The second being allowing or prohibiting the rental of guest houses. And the third being allowing or prohibiting the rental of outbuildings. I will just quickly kind of go through the document itself. And if at any point you have questions or comments, please feel free. So first off, short-term rentals are typically rentals of 30 days or less, and a short-term rental is considered a commercial use for the village code. How short-term rentals are different than bed and breakfasts are, short-term rentals are a larger category that, that bed and breakfast fit into. So a bed and breakfast is a type of short-term rental. There are a few key general concerns when considering the topic of short-term rentals. The first is the impact of long-term housing and those options. Short-term rentals can remove houses from the market and create neighborhoods of vacant homes during off-seasons, especially in communities that have a large tourist season. With onsite owner operations, long-term housing is still provided for at least one person. The second is impact on neighbors, such as the character, sense of community, or nuisances. And short-term rentals can change the character of a residential neighborhood to commercial if there are too many of them on the same street. There's fewer familiar faces in the neighborhood, and the likelihood of nuisance, noise, on-street parking, traffic events also increases for, as those who rent short-term rentals are usually on vacation or sometimes renting for a special event. The third is competition with the lodging industry. Especially in communities where there's a lot of tourism, short-term rentals can be a competitor to the established lodging industry and enacting regulations on short-term rentals levels this playing field between short-term rentals and the existing lodging industry. And this usually, this, this playing field is usually taxation rules and different or lesser safety requirements. This is less of a concern for the villages. There's already limited commercial areas for existing and potential lodging, and fewer events or attractions in the area to draw tourists. So to mitigate these impacts on neighborhoods, there's a few different options that the village can take to regulate short-term rentals. There's the option of prohibiting events, prohibiting non-dwellings used as rentals, such as tents or RVs, limiting occupancy, limiting the number of guest rooms, prohibiting or limiting on-street parking, requiring posting of licenses and rules of operation, requiring a provision of certain health and safety features, such as those required by the fire department, limiting the number of short-term rentals within a street or a neighborhood, limiting the total number of permits issued, requiring residential appearance, and requiring paying lodger's tax. There's also requiring or recommending liability insurance and requiring emergency contact information. So these different regulation, regulations to mitigate neighborhood impact are, address a few different things. The first is scale of operation. Some of these address the scale of specific operations by limiting, for example, the number of, by prohibiting non-dwelling units, it limits the scale of operation to those buildings on a property which are considered dwellings. And typically, that's the main house and possibly the guest house. So that limits the scale of operation for that property. There's also limits for the scale operation within the village as a whole, either by concentration in the neighborhoods or just in the overall village, limiting the number of permits issued as a whole. And then these also address common concerns for nuisances and safety by requiring first that, well, the occupants are aware that there are, for example, noise ordinances and restrictions, and requiring that, for example, fire evacuation routes are posted on, on the premises. This increases the safety factor and then also decreases the likelihood of nuisances, or at least informs those who are at the property that by doing so, they are violating our ordinances. For enforcement, there's, these regulations would likely lead to the outsourcing of code enforcement, at least for the first year or so, to, I guess, see what kind of issues arise with short-term rentals. There's a company- There's a company and several companies that are out there that their entire business is just regulating short-term rentals for municipalities, including drafting ordinances, monitoring for compliance, that whole thing. And so we can contract with one of them to to have, to have, to help with enforcement. And then if we don't see the need for their services, we can end that contract. If we do see the need for their services, we can, can continue that contract. The village would still be the party that revokes licenses and issues fines through our municipal court process. This would just be more an outsourcing of code enforcement, but we would still retain, I guess, the heavy hand, the heavy hammer. So moving on to the different options or areas for consideration and decision tonight. The first is absent or present owners. So the main thing is that there is perceptions about the involvement of short-term rental owners and renters when there is a host present on the site. This is the perceived difference between what people consider as negative Airbnbs or VRBOs and typically positively bed and breakfasts. So that there's usually an assumption that with an Airbnb or a VRBO that the owner is not there and there is an assumption with a bed and breakfast, the owner is there. And so there's I guess, so with, with a onsite owner, their presence can mitigate concerns about complaints, events and noise because they are there on the premises versus an absent owner, even if they are in the vicinity, it still takes time for them to get to the property or to find out what's happening. They would need to have someone else complain about the incident rather than seeing or hearing it for themselves. And so the villages or staff recommendation is to require that short-term rentals be onsite owner only. There is also the option of allowing absent owner rentals on a limited basis. However, the challenge really for these is enforcement. It's difficult for communities to obtain information on how many nights per year a property is being rented. And if, and those are typically the limitations on allowing absent owner on a limited basis. Some communities will allow, for example, you're allowed to rent 90 days without a present owner. That, that starts to get into the weeds of monitoring day-to-day business operations. And so allowing absent owner on a limited basis is a bit more complicated. And so again, as I mentioned, these perceived differences and the reason for this recommendation for onsite present owner are because of perceived differences that are anecdotal. And so of course, there are going to be absent owner rentals that operate to a higher standard than present owner rentals and vice versa. And the intent is to establish a baseline, some kind that people can well exceed. And restricting short-term rentals to only present owner operations is a way to reduce the likelihood of nuisance and impact on neighborhoods. But ultimately, it is the discretion of the operator to determine to who they rent to. The second topic is allowing short-term rental of guest houses. So guest houses have been allowed since incorporation and the rules have changed over time, but the intent has been to provide lodging for guests or members of a single household. So this, we broke it down into two different approaches to rental. There is long-term rental and there is short-term rental. The thing with long-term rental is that if, if guest houses were allowed to be rented for long-term, that would inherently change the zoning of the village. A guest house is a dwelling and all of most properties in the village are zoned, single-family residential with one dwelling in one family for that property. Guest houses are allowed because they are part of that single family and they're meant for guests. That's inherent, why we don't charge rent or why we assume that you wouldn't be charging rent to your family. So with, by, by allowing, by allowing long-term rental of guest houses, that would change the zoning inherently to multifamily with two dwellings for two families on a property. And while multifamily zoning isn't necessarily detrimental to the community on its own, it should be done with the intent of providing more housing density and the benefits that come, that can come from it, not as necessarily unintended consequence of, for example, short-term rentals. So should the village pursue long-term rental guest houses, zoning will become multifamily and this would need to be pursued purposefully. For short-term rental, this would not change the zoning of the village, since the property would still be providing for one family long-term. And the opportunity for a short-term rental would, it could be an incentive for those without guest houses to build them, since this could be an additional income source. And then for residents who currently own a guest house but are restricted from renting it, we would have to amend our condition of approval. And so staff do recommend that the village allows short-term rental only of guest houses. If, if the village were to prohibit rental of guest houses and uphold what is currently the case, this would maintain the condition on guest houses and this also wouldn't impact zoning. The option for short-term rental operators to live in the guest house and rent out the main house would still be available. And it's also not an unforeseen burden for the property owner to not be able to rent the guest house. Since when someone gets a conditional use permit for a guest house, they agree to abide by the conditions of that use, including not being able to rent it. There's a few distinctions between a guest house and an outbuilding and a guest house and illegally non-conforming dwelling. The main thing for the village is that a guest house is it, it becomes a dwelling with a kitchen. And that's what differentiates it from an outbuilding, like a garage shed or even like a studio that has almost all someone would need for living, but minus the kitchen. And we also have legally non-conforming dwellings that were annexed into the village the way they are. And those are not currently bound by the conditions of the guest house permit. So those could be rented long or short term, depending on their use. We have a non-conforming ordinance that addresses them. The third topic is allowing rental of outbuildings. And currently, we don't prohibit or allow rental of outbuildings, either long or short term. By allowing short-term rental of outbuildings, this would allow for a larger scale operation than limiting to just dwellings. And because we don't have any limitation on the number of outbuildings that you can build on a property, we just have the floor area ratio. So in theory, if there was no prohibition against it, you could build as many as you could under the floor area ratio and rent them all out. These buildings would need to be retrofitted for occupancy, for habitation and sleeping and living. There's different occupancy groups for different types of buildings. So if, for example, someone were to turn their garage into a living space, they would need to bring it up to international building code and international fire code standards. Those are not intended to be dwellings, so they're not, I guess, built for it. And there's also the option of prohibiting rental of outbuildings. And similar to the guest house dilemma for long-term rental of outbuildings, this would create a multifamily zoning. So long-term rental would not be recommended in this case. Short-term rental would also, again, lead to a larger scale. And so in order to limit the impact of, of short-term rentals on the village, staff recommend that we prohibit rental of outbuildings. There is quite, there was quite a bit of public comment received by received from the public, both at our public input meetings at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, and we also have had an ongoing public comment period. The public opinion that's included in this document was just looking at the options from a worksheet that was provided at that, at the second of the public meetings. There were a lot more public comments received and I highly recommend that the trustees look at all of them. They're just hard to quantify in, in an easy graphic format. And so a summary of the recommendations from staff to the trustees are to limit, to, to allow short-term rentals, but limited to onsite owner only. This is essentially saying that all short-term rentals need to obtain our bed and breakfast permit, because right now we require that, that bed and breakfast have the owner onsite. We would also recommend prohibiting events as a general rule and also having a cap on the number of permits issued. This way, those who are in the village who desire to have a short-term rental aren't bound geographically. And, but it also means that we won't have the entire village become short-term rentals. So this, this is the preferred option of limiting impact on the village compared to say, limiting by neighborhood or the number that you can have adjacent to each other or the number on a street, because then for example, if someone were to, say, if your neighbor got a short-term rental, if there was a limit on the number of short-term rentals on your street or the number adjacent, that means that you wouldn't be able to, even if you wanted to, but then you would also have a short-term rental next to you. So this could mean that entire neighborhoods could obtain a permit if they wanted to, but that would be the desire of that neighborhood and the desire of each of those individual property owners. The other recommendations are to allow short-term rental only of guest houses, since that would not impact the zoning of the village and to not allow rental of outbuildings, since it would limit the scale of rentals and it would also make it easier for property owners, they wouldn't need to retrofit their buildings to bring them up to occupancy standards. The approval process would follow our bed and breakfast permit. The planning and zoning commission would approve or deny each application at a public meeting, allowing opportunity for the neighbors to voice concerns prior to operation. And a revocation process can follow the same as our current bed and breakfast or home occupation permit process, where the department would receive a written complaint and investigate that complaint. If they did violate our ordinances, the planning and zoning commission would revoke the license at their next meeting. Or they would look into the evidence and decide whether to revoke that license. If the, if the license is revoked, we also recommend to include a condition that the operator and our property owner would be prohibited from reapplying for one calendar year from revocation. This way, we wouldn't necessarily have repeat offenders cycling in and out. In addition to the license revocation, since it would be a violation of the village ordinances, the village can also pursue the case in municipal court for up to a $500 fine. And as a note for homeowners associations, they can also separately prohibit short-term rentals in their, in their neighborhood covenants, separate from the village's requirements. This does mean that someone could get a short-term rental permit from the village to operate, but then they would also have the consequence of violating covenants or restrictions in that neighborhood. And so it would be up to the property owner whether they would be willing to face those consequences. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Justice. I would remind the trustees, this is a discussion-only item. So with that, do we have questions from any of the trustees? Trustee Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, Director of Justice, that's more information that I could have even imagined on short-term rentals. Thank you for putting that together. Just a quick question with regard to have we done any kind of fiscal analysis in terms of, you know, what would we have to get in terms of revenue to balance what it would cost us in enforcement? You know, in, in making sure that, you know, things are being handled correctly. Have we done anything like that?
Trustee Pacheco, Mayor Trustees, it's an excellent question. So the companies that we're looking at, they charge a standard rate, which could be covered by the permit fees and annual renewal. And then they also charge based on, on, on top of that, they charge based on the number of times their service is used. So the more often they get calls or complaints or need to monitor our short-term rentals for compliance, the more that they will be, the more that they will charge us. So if we and, and if that is the case, then it's, it's more likely that we're going to follow through with code enforcement violations and then we would receive the fines for those violations and then the license revocation. And then if we were to have a cap on the number of permits, then by removing that permit from violating property owner, someone else could, could apply and then start that cycle over again. There, there may be some costs associated with enforcement that would not necessarily be covered by the permit fee itself. There are alternatives to financing. The village could adopt a lodger's tax specifically for enforcing and, well, related to tourism activities, including enforcement.
Well, my thoughts are first and foremost that, I mean, we need to protect our village, obviously, and our residents with whatever it is that we kind of move forward with. And in my opinion, I think we need to take baby steps as opposed to doing, you know, taking steps to, to change a lot of things, to include zoning. I do like the recommendations that you made, but I would love to hear from the other trustees in terms of, you know, kind of how you feel about what was presented here tonight and kind of your thoughts. And if anybody has any, you know, just experience with this, I've, I've, I've never had a short-term rental property. But maybe some of the other trustees can talk about that a little bit.
Who else wants to ask questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just have some comments. That, that was excellent presentation, Tiffany. All the information is very, very, very good information. I, I went through it all and after, in fact, I read it twice just to try to get a real handle on what you had put together. And I thought your recommendations, I agree with all of them. And I, I would go with, like on page 170, you have the four options. I would go with option four, which would be allow short-term rentals with new regulations specific to short-term rentals. But, and I had planned to bring up something about limit the distance between the rent, the main house and the rental house. But with some previous discussion tonight, I, I guess we can't do that. So, but everything else I think is, is, is good and I would agree with all your recommendations.
Thank you, Trustee Rayal. Any other trustee?
Sure, I'll, I'll weigh in.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Lewis.
Tiffany, thank you very much. This is awesome presentation you've given us. And, and I have a couple of questions, but I'll sort of go through my stance and my feel from, I've been doing quite a bit of research on this myself. And, and I, I totally agree with the recommendation to, I think owners have to be onsite. Everything I've been able to find out. Yep, there are a few good owners that can be absentee, but that's just, that's not protecting our village residents. So I think if somebody wants to have a short-term rental, they need to be there. So the second is, I, I agree totally with prohibiting events. You know, that's, that's what other lodgings for. If, if somebody wants to have an event, it's not renting somebody's guest house and having a party and, or a room in their house and having a party. So I, I totally agree with that. A cap on the number of permits, I, I agree totally. I, I, I like coming up with a number. I don't know what that number is. You know, you're 1% of households is not a bad number. Then, you know, if we grow, they can add another permit. But I think you've got to cap permits. And, and then the next thing I think is that And, and then the next thing, I think, is that, I, I think, and I, and I've read, I don't have my documents in front of me here, I've got quite a file on it, but it seems like you can put a distance between permits. The last thing I would want is a village resident is for my neighbor to get a short-term rental permit and my neighbor on the other side to get a short-term rental permit. And I think, and I'm pretty sure I've read that, that you can put, you know, we're going to issue 1% of our households, that's how many permits we'll have. We're going to have 26 permits, but there has to be 500 or 1,000 feet between permits. So, if somebody two houses down gets a permit, we're not going to get another one on our block or it's going to be way at the other end of the block or the street. And, and, and so, I, I, I really would encourage trying to pursue that a little bit more, because I think that really prohibit, you know, that really protects a neighborhood. I think, you know, I, I, recommendation, you know, the, the worksheets, the options, three and four, I, I think both, you know, number three, I think you could just work it in if you wanted with bed and breakfast, because I think, in our mind, I think most of us think of it as more of a bed and breakfast kind of operation. And, and I, that's why I think owner has to be there, you space it out, they have to be short-term. But I think, you know, you, you charge them for a permit, you know, there's a fine for their first infraction and there's a revoking on their second infraction. I, I, I want to bring it in, I don't think it should be the Planning and Zoning Commission at that point. I think, once they get their permit, I think it should be the court. I think they go before the judge and, and it's clear here, you have this infraction, there's a fine for your first infraction. There's a fine for your second infraction and we're revoking your license. And, and I, I, I sort of made a note to myself here that I didn't think, and I would make them substantial. I mean, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it to protect people and we're going to show that we're, you know, we're really going to be very serious and strict about if you're going to, going to have your rental. And so, you know, I, I think you've got to make fines substantial and, and they've got to be clear, and I think people should have to go before the court. I, I don't think we want anything to do with outbuildings. I, I think that's just, that, you know, that's just going to lead to all sorts of things. And I think you just cut that, you nip that right in the bud and, and you just put requirements on them. And I, I don't know that, you know, letting somebody get their license back in one year, I, I don't know if we want to be tougher than that. You know, we're going to give you one infraction. If there's a second one, you know, come back in a couple of years or something, we're just not going to. I mean, this shouldn't be a burden on the village and it shouldn't be a burden on neighborhoods. You know, you either, if you're going to get a short-term rental, here's the rules, you follow them or, you know, action's going to be swift and strict. So, that's, that's my five-minute rant, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Lewis. Trustee Ricabini, would you like to weigh in?
I just, I agree with all the recommendations and everything that's been said. We need to make sure that we do this right. We're going to do it. It's happening now, so we need to do something. I would, I, I don't know how we would end up actually limiting the number of permits. If somebody's got a short-term rental and it went into the block, they may only do that once and then not do it again the rest of the year. So, at what point does that, that kind of ticket end up going up for grabs, so to speak? So, I, I think that, that could be problematic in managing through that. I'm not sure exactly how to manage through that, that's just my comment. Ms. Justice, this is a fantastic, fantastic report. I know more about it now than I ever did in my whole life, and we've looked at this for a long time, so, good job on it. And that's, that's what I've got on that thus far. So, I'm, I'm good otherwise to continue moving forward.
Thank you, trustees. Let's move to item 13, trustee informal discussion. Roundtable discussion is informal. The Board of Trustees will take no official vote or other official action. Trustee Rayel.
Okay, I have a couple of things. First of all, on the corner of Sarah Lane and Fourth Street, the, the street sign is missing. I don't know whether there was an accident and knocked it down, there's a pole there, but there's no sign on it.
Okay.
And maybe Tiffany can answer this. The Farmer's Plaza that's being proposed, have they indicated yet what kind of retail they plan there?
Trustee Rayel, Mayor Trustees, we haven't heard anything from Farmer's Plaza for any building permits or proposed retail yet.
Okay, thank you. And then also on eco-electric, the advertise, excuse me, the advertisement I've seen and of them on TV, they, their advertising has been in Albuquerque. And I just want to make sure that someone talks to them and make sure that they're using the right code so we can get the grocery seed stacks and it's not going to Albuquerque.
That's a good comment.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Lewis.
All right, thank you. First point that I wanted us to discuss and I'd like us to look at, it seems like they're throwing a lot of money at agriculture and, and we're getting, we're benefiting from that, we're getting money for the AgriNature Center. But I don't know that anybody's ever sat down or we've sat down and talked about what the end game is for the AgriNature Center. What do we want it to be? What do we see it being in five years? Who are the players? And, and so, before we draw plans and go forward with more remodeling, I, I would strongly encourage that we have some kind of strategic planning session for the AgriNature I, I just think we need to know, you know, we're getting a lot of money for it, but we better know where we're headed before we start spending that money. Second was something I thought.
On, Mayor?
Go ahead, Ann.
Oh, sorry to interrupt, Mayor Trustees and Trustee Lewis, we do have a strategic planning process in progress right now at the AgriNature Center, and one of the tables is on the center and the facilities. So, if you want to be involved, I would be, we would be happy to have you.
Great, I'd love to be. I'd like to get more information on that.
Go ahead.
Okay, secondly, just to make you all sort of aware, I talked to Ann, we talked about this a little bit, I know her plate's been very full. I met with a, a former mayor of Las Vegas, Mexico, and, and he was telling me that during his tenure, they, they developed a fund and they passed an ordinance where they had first wire of refusal on any water rights being sold in their city limits. And I think for us to take some of the money that we're putting towards purchases of, you know, more land and open space, that maybe somehow we fund some money in there too to have control over buying water rights, if somebody wants to sell them and, and keep them in the village. So, I would, I, I know Ann will get to it, I know she's going to reach out to them, but I, I just want to make everybody aware. I think, according to him, there's a system for being able to do that, and I think that would really be in our best interest.
Can you tell us who that mayor was? I may know him.
Sure, it was Matt, is it Gonzalez?
Okay.
Trustee Lewis, this is Danielle, Mayor Trustees, it was Matt Martinez?
Matt Martinez.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Trustee Lewis?
I, I had one more and I just, I know with the housing market in Albuquerque metro area right now, that there is so much demand, pent-up demand for building and, and finding lots. And, and I really encourage us to get out front with coming up with how in our master plan, we talk about a pilot program for different kinds of residential, and, and I would really encourage us to push forward with deciding how we would do a pilot program. How would we put out an RFP, whatever we're going to do, but I, I, I think we've got to get in front of it, because I know the demand is mounting and, and the pressure's mounting on the village and the open space that we have, so.
Thank you.
My comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, Trustee Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things, and this just kind of goes with what, what Trustee Lewis was just talking about. And I think I have made this request before and hopefully we can get to it at some point, but it would be nice to have a list of available properties in the village, both for lease and for sale, in terms of commercial properties as well as residential. And I know that the residential list is in the village vision, but I think that would help us kind of be ambassadors to, you know, businesses looking to move, to seeing if there's a match, you know, between what people are looking for and what we have to offer. So, I'd be interested in seeing something like that. I also feel like we need to be really diligent now with regard to applying for grants and any monies available that will, you know, that, that can help us meet some of our goals within the village. And I think there's going to be, you know, there's going to be monies out there right now for, for just these kind of things. And I know we get, we get busy with our, you know, our everyday life and, and our work and sometimes we're, we're not looking for those opportunities. So, I just hope that we'll keep our eyes open for those. And I know, I know Ann is doing that and I know Maria's doing that, but I just want to stress that that's something that I feel is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ricabini.
Just one comment, an echo now on the, his comment on pilot project. I think that we are going to get out in front of this and, and I'm hoping that we have some nice projects that are presented to us that will, that will become part of those pilot projects and, and preserve open space while, while, you know, you know, instead of breaking up into, into one-acre lots, as we've talked about, some of the cluster and, and managing and keeping that open space. So, I appreciate that a lot. So, I have to, Mayor, thank you.
Great. The only thing I have is, I know Fred wasn't here tonight, but I did meet the, the new sheriff, Captain Chris Romero, who's an interim sheriff. He took over for Captain Sharp, who retired. And I know Fred met with him either, I believe it was yesterday, but I haven't gotten a report back from him, but from what I understand, he's well thought of and he's going to, he's going to keep the village, you know, high on the priority list. I think things are going to be about as they have been. So, with that, I'm going to announce that we are adjourned at 9:40 PM. Thank you. Thank you.